Hello.
How's Yash and Maya doing tonight?
Doing well.
Doing well. All those early decision applications went in already?
Uh, yep.
How about you, Maya? Yeah?
Well, I didn't do any early decisions.
Oh, you didn't do any early? Okay. And when is the, when is the date they're gonna let you know now? Is that?
Mid-December.
Mid-December? Usually before the holiday, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Pretty confident?
We'll see. I don't know. I'm just not thinking about it.
Yeah. I always remember years ago, taking the SATs, and the proctor in the room said, he looked around the room, and I forget how many people were in the room. I think it was like an auditorium, so it might have been a couple hundred. And he said, you know, don't worry about this test. And we all looked at him. He said, because there's a college and university for every one of you. You know, and I'll tell you, it put you at ease, kind of, you know, it gave you a different thought prior to going into the taking the, taking the test. So it was pretty good advice. Maya, are you hybrid or are you totally remote?
I'm a hybrid. Um, yeah, and I think I'm gonna stick with it.
Yeah, you like going?
Yeah, I liked it.
What's the favorite, what's your favorite thing about being there? I mean, just to see your friends a little bit, or?
Yeah, I really like seeing my friends, but also, um, I guess I just like the environment a lot. I've been there for, like, for the past four years, so it just feels like home.
Yeah, it's a neat place. I, I like walking in to the high school. It's really neat. You know, the, the architecture, just the whole thing. I like it. It's kind of a, kind of an interesting building, too.
So, man, I think we have seven board members, I think.
Oh, I think, I counted ten with Michelle.
Oh, I can't see her, so should we, you wanna get started?
We have a quorum, so.
Okay, great. Um, welcome. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the School District operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunity for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at Sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet, and Times, the Times, on January ninth, two thousand and twenty, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 38.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only votes, otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the roll?
Yes. Beth Baron?
Yes, here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Jess Deutsch?
Yeah.
That's Bagwell?
Here.
Ryan McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz?
You're muted, Peter.
Oh, sorry, here. Oh.
Daphne?
All around buttons, here.
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, the first item on our agenda tonight is item D1, adoption of minutes for the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Betsy, second. Peter, thank you. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Bolden, could you call the roll, please?
Who are Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That takes us to our E1, the Student Board Members Reports. Maya Khan and Yash Roy, we'd love to hear what you have to say tonight. Would you like to give your report?
Uh, so, hi, everyone. Before we get into our report, Maya and I would like to congratulate you, Ms. Baron, and Mr. Ponder, on your reelections to the Board of Education. We look forward to working with you in the future and thank both of you for all of your hard work in previous terms. So we'd also like to congratulate Mr. Durbin on his election to the Board of Education, although he isn't up here on the panel. And we look forward to getting to know him better and working with all three of you to build on the work of this board and continue to approve our school district. So this week, we'd like to report on the activities, the plans, and the goals of PHS's Student Council since our elections about a month ago. Student Council has been planning for different events for the student body and, like, our goals and vision for this year. We have essentially broken our work into four portions. I'll talk about the first two and then Maya will speak about the rest. Due to the incredibly unique situation we find ourselves in right now, Student Council's first priority is community outreach to a plethora of different activities from Spirit Week that's going on this week, today's Jamie Day, to online tournaments, which we're already drawing large numbers of students, to future drives through masks and holiday gifts. We hope that through these activities, we can strengthen the feeling of community within our school, the student body, and help new students, especially freshmen, feel more welcome at PHS. Maya and I are also making it a priority to keep the student body informed about the actions and decisions of the Board, the regular updates, and by increasing awareness of these meetings so that students have a better understanding of what's going on in the district. Student Council also believes that inclusivity is an important part of our work this year, and we are in the early stages of planning events with various identity clubs at PHS, like the Asian American Club, Multiracial Student Union, GSA Care, and the Latino Club. We hope that by better communicating with these clubs and listening to their perspective and experiences, Stuco can plan events where students can learn more about the various cultures and minorities at our school, and that the different minority groups in our schools can feel more welcome, included, represented, and heard. Maya and I also had the opportunity last Friday to participate in the Restorative Circle Coalition Training, the Miss Baxter is planned, and we both believe that this organization is an incredibly important step toward making our schools more inclusive and look forward to sharing what we learned from the upcoming trainings and meetings with our peers and with all of you. For the next, for the next meeting, we also plan to have survey information for all of you, and we look for, look forward to seeing you in December. Now, on to Maya.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to echo Yash's congratulations to both Ms. Beth Baron and Ms. Tuck-Ponder on the reelections and also like to congratulate Mr. Durbin for his election to the Board. I look forward to working with you all as well. The third and fourth claims of the Student Council plans are connectivity slash wellness and recreating in-person events. During this pandemic, many students have felt overwhelmed and stressed with online school, and we believe that Student Council can be valuable at organization here as we can inform all of you about the mental health and needs of the students built upon the Wellness Wednesday Program and other school and district-wide programming. And also plan various student-led events that can serve as distresses throughout this year. Our fourth and final goal is to continue the various traditions and events at PHS and be creative planners this year that can create events that are both fun and safe. As the year progresses, we hope to design events that can bring all our students together. Both Yash and I look forward to working with you throughout the year on these goals and to also keep you updated on what PHS, the Student Council, is working on at these board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you both. Does anyone have any questions for our student reps? Okay, um, thank you for, for your report. That takes us on to item F1, the HIB report, which is a consent item. And just to remind the public, we will go through some actions that are by consent, and at the end of the meeting, we will vote for them all at one, one time. The second one is the School Self-Assessment Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. It's also a consent item. And that brings us to G1, President's Comments, my comments. Just want to thank everyone for, for being here tonight. And thank you to our student reps for their kind words, and, and we all, I think, are happy to put the election behind us and look forward to kind of focusing on the children and the students and getting on with our work. We all have a lot to do, and I'll just, Betsy, did you want to say anything about where we are with the Superintendent Search?
Oh, sure. Today was an exciting day for the Board. Our search consultant provided us with our seven semifinalists. We, we didn't meet them yet. We will be meeting them with, with them in December. But we did speak about them with our consultant, and so we are very pleased that we're at that stage. We will keep the public informed as we walk through the next steps. And I, I thank my board member, my fellow board members in advance. We have many, many hours of interviews scheduled in December. So we'll be seeing a lot of each other.
Thank you, and we're all grateful to Betsy for organizing and being the liaison for the Board to our search consultant. She's done an amazing job of keeping us organized and on track. It's kind of a very complex logistical process. And Betsy, really appreciate your time on that. I, I also would like to congratulate Ms. Jean Ponder, Ms. Jean, Ms. Jean Durbin on her election to the Board, just to, to mention that tonight. And one other thing I wanted to say, I spoke with the mayor this week, and she asked that I share this message in, in our forum that with the upcoming holidays, it's obviously crucial for us in the schools, for our students and teachers, to keep everyone as safe as possible. And the mayor is giving updates three times a week. She has a special update on the situation in our community with respect to COVID, with respect to how people can get help, with respect to how people can help others, and what's generally going on. And you can find that and sign up for her report at PrincetonNewJersey.gov. Go on the website, and there's a, a place to click, and you can receive reports from the mayor. And one of the most important things she's said in there, and she asked me to emphasize, was that to our families who have college students returning home, there are a number of very specific guidelines that are, that are suggested by the Health Department with respect to welcoming those students back into your family. I know we have one in our house, and it's, it's gonna be a tricky reunion with her because obviously we'll be wearing masks, and they'll be doing testing and trying to make sure we're all staying safe. And the other thing is that obviously over Thanksgiving, there are guidelines from the Health Department about how we celebrate in, in our own families. Unfortunately, most of us just with our families and not with our extended families. But we ask that, that our families and that the public look to the mayor's website and to those bulletins that are coming from our community to understand how we can all keep each other safe as the pandemic ramps up and, and just something really important. So we, we ask that you look there for that information, and that's what I wanted to say. Barry, over to you.
Okay, thank you. That, that's a good segue for me to, to announce to the public that, number one, I, I just want to say how, how fortunate we have been to open school and, uh, over the last two months. And I want to thank my medical team, all the nurses, our administrative team, our teaching staff, for being so diligent with the pre-assessments, temperature taking, and all the precautions that we've taken. We have not had a case that's originated in school. We have had a number of cases. You've received probably too many communications from me regarding what's been going on, but it's been in our attempt to be transparent with you. I met with the Health Department today. I met with regional superintendents Friday and today. And to protect our hybrid learning model, I'm recommending to the Board of Education that we go remote for only one week after the Thanksgiving holiday. So from, we will be in school in our hybrid model and remote model till the twenty-fifth of November. And on the twenty-fifth, we will go remote until December seventh. We will use that week to work with the Princeton Health Department, our school doctor, to determine the cases which are mounting in Princeton and, and the regional area to determine whether or not we're trying to, what we're trying to do is mitigate some of the quarantining. Because if we have to quarantine five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or twenty-five teachers, it then becomes impossible for us to, to operate school. So what we want to do is make sure that families that are visiting, kids would have enough time to either have symptoms or hopefully stay healthy so that we can bring our staff back on the seventh and be pretty assured that they will be back in school in a healthy environment. The worst thing that can happen is if we open up on the thirtieth of, of November, and there are a number of cases that first week in December where we have to quarantine a lot of staff and a lot of students, which probably would cost us the month of December for instructional purposes. We do not want to do that. So the prudent move, after having conversations with our medical team, was basically to close school for that week so that we could mitigate any illnesses and return our staff on the seventh when we, you know, we're comfortable that all of our symptoms have been checked, all of the cases that have been reported to the Princeton Health Department have been contact traced, and we could satisfy the requirement to bring both our students and, and staff back in a healthy environment. So that would be a recommendation that I would be making to the Board tonight. The second announcement that I have is that the Board, in, in the past years, has always had a board update after the board meeting or a board bulletin. We're gonna call it the Transparency Report. And tomorrow afternoon, it will be sent to all of our faculty and staff. It will be on our website. And the public who would like to get it by email can just go onto our website, click a link, sign up, and every month, the, the day after a board meeting, you will receive the Transparency Report. Two presentations tonight. Four, three months ago, the Board charged us with developing a renaming committee and developing a process for renaming John Witherspoon School to be a total pre-K, pre-K to twelve educational experience. We have met three times as a committee, and we have charged Principal Jason Burr with putting together and his staff a comprehensive K to twelve engagement program. He's gonna share that engagement program with us tonight, but I think it's important because this process has not been predetermined by the Board or the committee. We're letting it evolve. And I think when you hear the exciting things the kids are involved in, pre-K to twelve, and the conversations they are having, it is crossing all the racial literacy and all the, all the social justice programs that we're operating in our schools. This conversation that youngsters are having is transcending all of those and actually becoming a wonderful K to twelve experience. Second phase was the community involvement piece, and Principal Burr is gonna talk tonight about a website that we're going to be developing with the help of Elizabeth Collier and to engage the general public, because we want this to be a community event. We want it to evolve. There's no predetermined outcome, and we're going to see where this process takes us. So I'm going to introduce Principal Burr now to share with the general public the, the basic plan that we, we are actually putting in place as we speak. Jason, are you?
I, I certainly am. Thank you, Dr. Galasso. It's nice to see everybody this evening. Hello to you. Hello to all the members of the Board, the student ambassadors, and of course, everybody who is watching this Board of Education meeting from home. It is a great pleasure to be with you. Many of you out there on the Board and also out listening this evening know that I have, this is my eleventh year as principal in Princeton, but it is my first year as the principal of Princeton Unified Middle School. And I think that's been the excitement, as Dr. Galasso has indicated. We are on the precipice of really what has been an exciting project for students. Mr. Bolden, if you wouldn't mind giving me the privilege of being able to share my screen?
Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And so, once again, as this loads, I, I just want to say once again how grateful I am for this opportunity. I am the proud principal for one year of Princeton Unified Middle School. This project that has begun to take legs is starting to really gain a lot of excitement, and it is actually making the middle school students very eager to begin their phase. And I'm going to walk through what has, what we've accomplished already and what we hope to accomplish by the end. So I had a very good meeting with the renaming committee at the beginning of this month. They gave me some suggestions in preparation for this evening and also with the diversity committee last week. So if we could, I'm just moving ahead now. Let's review a little bit of where we've been. Over the last four months or so, we've been engaged in this idea of renaming John Witherspoon Middle School, a school that I served proudly for ten years, and I see somebody on the screen who has attended John Witherspoon Middle School in the past. So it's nice to see them, too, and there's a lot of pride there. But we know that Jeffrey Allen, who is one, an alumni, and is also a member of the renaming committee, uh, put together a letter and a corresponding petition to rename John Witherspoon Middle School. There has been various meetings that took place. Mr. Allen and, and a number of alumni met with Jen Bijoni and Carolyn Bailey and some members of PHS staff to kind of talk about a little bit around the renaming process. The Board engaged in the discussion of Policy seventy-five fifty, which talks about the naming of buildings within the community. There was several board meetings where this topic was debated. There was a public meeting of the Policy Committee on July twenty-third in the morning, and a lot of that conversation from the public and also among alumni got transformed into the project that you're gonna see described in just a few moments. I want to say hello this evening, and for anybody who's known me twenty-five years in middle schools, I tell everybody it, it's been about the kids and the people that I've had the pleasure to work with. So on with me this evening is Jen Bijoni, who is the media specialist and librarian at Princeton High School. I want to thank Jen right now for all of the assistance she's given, but also for being a listening ear to all of the kids who kind of knew where to take their questions and their thoughts, and, and this is what has helped this project evolve. You can see the rest of the steps that have taken place over the summer, various board meetings. There was an equity meeting on August tenth where there was a hearing on the name change. And on the following evening, August eleventh, the Board of Education approved the resolution to change the name of the middle school. That mandate was put in place. We, we need to have a new name for the middle school effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. At that point, Dr. Galasso put together a meeting of the renaming committee, divided the responsibilities into an educational plan and a community engagement plan. Roles were assigned, and it was around that time that Jen Bijoni and I, as members of the committee, started to pull together educators that we thought would be interested in engaging in this conversation. You're gonna hear me talk a lot about a wonderful educator that I've had the chance to meet this year by the name of Katie Denine, who teaches U.S. History One at Princeton High School. I am absolutely enamored of her work and of everything that she has done to further this conversation and to get the students involved in this project. U.S. History One students are freshmen. So you are talking about captivating the group of students who most recently graduated from John Witherspoon Middle School in this process, and I, I'm gonna be able to show you in a little while. They've had quite a lot to say. There was a renaming educational plan draft created for our October twelfth follow-up meeting, a little bit more than a month ago. And it was on August first that Katie Denine began assigning student projects on individuals that were being considered for the renaming. There was a list of fifteen names that were developed. This list was generated from the policy meeting that took place in July, from conversations among alumni that Katie and my own media specialist Carolyn Bailey and Jen Bijoni and a few other teachers were kind of part of a conversation, and, and a list started to develop. And I want to highlight again Dr. Galasso's comments that this, in many ways, has developed organically the whole way. So even throughout my presentation this evening, there's a shell of a plan here, and it becomes a little more clear each day, but there's still pieces that are gonna fall into place, and I think they're gonna fall into place of their own volition. So you can see the list of people who are being considered, and I think it's worth noting, my friend Jen Bijoni said to me, you know, we don't want to rule out either that students may decide that, what if we were to revert back to John Witherspoon or some iteration of Witherspoon as he's a famed member of this community? Jen, at this point, am I, am I fairly accurate in the way I'm portraying this? Is there anything I'm leaving out?
That's the first time I've heard Jen speechless.
In, some of the students in Katie Denine's classes added some of these names. So it didn't only come out of the adult conversations that were had, but actually part of her course discussion as well. And then, of course, one of your students as well.
Jen, I think that's a really terrific lead-in to this next slide. You know, we had this original list of fourteen to fifteen names, and, and since Katie sort of fostered this research process, we've had a few more names added to this list, including Dr. Cornell West, Joseph Bloomfield, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and Albert Hines. So the list has grown a little bit, and, and again, that organic nature that this process has kind of undergone. Let me show you a little bit of an example of the really terrific work that Ms. Denine has done. This is an example of the research process that she sort of guided the students through. Let me roll that back one more time. That doesn't, so as you can see, see if I can get this added a little bit better, and I don't know that I can. Let me see if I can get that link up just there. That's a little bit better. So as you can see, you know, essential questions that our students are, are wrestling with. Who or what should the new name of the Princeton Unified Middle School honor and why? Framing the question, why do you think there've been calls to remove Witherspoon's name? And, and just speaking to the reasons why maybe Witherspoon's history doesn't connect with our current values, but also as this particular student highlighted, ongoing support of the Black Lives Matter movement. You've already heard Dr. Galasso talk about the social justice issues that a lot of us are debating, are living in this project, and I think that's the power of it. You can see, what? You can see what is, what is historical memory? This entire concept of why do certain things live and, and why do some stories live on and others don't? Where have we seen a recent reckoning with historical memory? You can see that Ms. Denine has guided students along a process of examining, you know, why Confederate monuments are being taken down? What is the 1776 Commission, you know, charged with doing? Why are there statues coming down in England? Including the brother statue in, in Scotland of John Witherspoon, I might add. And Woodrow Wilson's legacy, of course, at the Princeton University. One of the questions, you know, why has the Washington Redskins decided to rename its football team? So all of these are, are debates, you know, including then what do we know about the, about the history of Witherspoon himself? Continuing on, I wanted to show some sample projects of what Ms. Denine collected. So that was an example of the research work itself. But as we examine the different aspects of what kids decided to put together. One of our students, that, that last research project was by Jawan Owusu, a former student at Princeton Unified Middle School. This is a website by Lauren Gerard. As you can see, she put together a website asking these questions. Why did we change the name? The final steps. And in this particular case, she is also lobbying for Betsy Stockton. So one of the names that's been thrown around and you can see that Ms. Gerard is, is thinking about why Betsy Stockton might be a viable candidate. This is a really good project regarding the, the possibility of Mr. Paul Robeson. Famous name in this community. I think you'll be impressed.
It is important for the new face of Princeton Unified Middle School, previously John Witherspoon Middle School, to be a role model, someone who's important to American history and someone who upholds the values of Princeton Public Schools. A hero, an innovator, and someone who fought against injustice everywhere, who stays unrecognized. A person the government tried to hide from the history books, but who still fought for equality. This is Paul Robeson. Paul Robeson grew up on a heavily segregated Princeton with his father as a minister at the Witherspoon Church. During his college years, Paul Robeson attended Rutgers University where he was an exceptional athlete and student. Graduating Ballack Victorian of his class, Paul Robeson became a lawyer after going to law school and later quit to become an actor and singer. Most of all, Paul Robeson was a huge activist, went unnoticed because of government propaganda as they took action against him to silence him. Despite this, he continued to use his fame to help oppressed people around the world.
So that's a small smattering of, of why Paul Robeson might be a representative. And there was some thought put in as I, as I planned this presentation for this evening. Wanting to show a number of different options from a number of different kids. Here's a slideshow suggesting that Albert Einstein be the proper name of our school. So again, a lot of different input from many different students. Katie Denine's US History One students have certainly been busy. Again, this is Ms. Luther. The last video was done by Nick Matisse, another former student from the middle school. And I'm just really proud of, of all the kids and their effort. So Phase One started to come to an end on October 30th. Katie Denine's projects were due and it was at that time that Jen, Katie and I brought in Patty Manhart and Marissa Soprano, two other great educators at Princeton High School. And we are planning a webinar, a dialogue that will be recorded for people to see about the renaming project. We came together to kind of talk about what the gains were, how could we get kids engaged in this discussion? And the exciting part is that this discussion among club leaders and alumni with the US History One students is going to be used as an entry point to turnkey some of this information to the middle school students. One of the things that the renaming project, the renaming committee was really invested in this idea that there be this sharing of information from our older kids to our middle school kids. And you're going to see where this eventually comes to our elementary school kids. In addition to this dialogue that is being recorded on Friday, and I, I can't thank Ms. Manhart and Ms. Soprano, Ms. Denine, Ms. Bajoni, all people involved, the club leaders, MSAN Pulse. There's several community groups that are going to be involved. We have alumni who are moderating. It's an exciting time, but in addition to this, we're also going to be creating a website that should be launched early next week where members of the community can continue to review these names that are being considered. Content, as you can see, we have a lot of student projects. Content is going to be linked to that website. So people can engage with it. And a mechanism is being created for collecting support for an individual or suggestions still for a person who is not on the list. So this is an exciting time. And again, a reminder that throughout this process, we've actually seen our list of names grow. So Phase Two begins right after our Thanksgiving holiday. This is going to be the time that the civics teachers and our media specialist, Ms. Bailey over here at Princeton Unified Middle School are going to begin engaging middle school students using that webinar as an entry point to this discussion about renaming. We're going to be reviewing assorted renaming initiatives, monument removals that are happening across the country. And this is going to kick off the next middle school project using some of the US History One students' projects as exemplars. There's also talk about engaging high school students as ambassadors, serving almost as a advisor capacity for middle school students who are building projects. And we're trying to build that aspect in as well. So again, you see the link between former students of John Witherspoon Middle School and concerned kids with our current kids. Teams at civic students will choose an individual for consideration for renaming based off of the PHS community list and viewing PHS student projects. It should be noted again, the choice may come out that reverting back to Witherspoon or even consideration that the school not take on a specific name is, is still on the table. That research project is going to be in, in place here at the middle school. And again, we are tentatively planning on having an end product where we will have Ken Burns slideshow documentary film styles where you will see a three to five minute video, somewhat similar to the one that you just saw shared about Mr. Robeson. Students will present their projects to their classmates in school. My two civics teachers, John and Stephanie McCann, along with Karen and Calata, along with my media specialist Carolyn Bailey. We have a couple of existing civics projects where the eighth grade really does an amazing job of sharing their work with one another. They change the schedule. They rotate students, they share out. We're planning on adopting a similar strategy here so that the eighth graders all get a chance to hear their own stu-, their own classmates' projects. And then, as you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of at our middle school is we have something each Friday called Community Period. And Community Period is a place where we get to know students, we get to know one another well. It's small community groups, small advisory groups. And in this way, we're hoping to have our eighth grade students turnkey these projects, maybe taking the list down from that 15 to 18 down to maybe a more manageable group of five or six that we share with the remainder of the middle school community. From there, we are hoping to have a project where I will moderate with the civics teachers where our, you know, three to six projects that we seem to be landing on, we can share this out with a panel of community members. Tentative break would be, you know, tentative date would be after the winter break. And then we move to Phase Three, that somewhere around the beginning of February, those eighth grade projects will be lent down towards our elementary school students to engage the fifth graders who will be that first group of sixth graders to attend whatever the new school's name actually to be. And this can be a first step. As you know, we plan transition activities in a normal year. We invite students to come up to the musical. We do various things. Short of knowing what next future spring looks like for transition activities, this would be a really fun way to engage students to say, hey, you are going to be the first group under this new name at the middle school. And there's going to be some undetermined way that those elementary school students are going to engage and grapple with this information that they're going to be given. I don't think we know yet exactly what that's going to be. And again, that's been some of the beauty, the way that this has developed organically. I am hoping to be able to come with a final list around the time of, you know, the middle of March. That is an end date that we are trying to settle on. And I thank everybody for their kind attention to this presentation. This has been tremendous fun for us. And I'm just really proud of the people that I've gotten to know and the people I've gotten to work with. And I want to thank everybody for their kind attention.
Thanks, Jason. We, we really appreciate you giving us an update tonight. Now, the committee was so pleased with what you presented the other night that I thought it would be appropriate for the community now to start to be engaged with you know, the whole process and how the website is going to engage them. I think the nice thing about this is that you're involving kids at every grade level and, and at every, the elementary schools to the, to the high school. And I think that that was the board's vision when they charged us with developing a committee and a program was to engage and make this a learning experience for youngsters. We're not sure how it's going to end up, but we do know that the educational process is alive and well. And the debate about solving a contemporary social problem is being done in our schools, which is critical to the development and the advancing of any democracy. So thank you for that. I don't know if board members have questions for Jason or comments?
I have a comment. So I'm also on the committee. And when we saw it the other day, I was just blown away about the research and the ideas that our students have created and looking at this project. And I really want to thank the staff to have supported our students. And it's exciting that this is so student centered and so student focused. And that this will be the students, you know, process and coming up with a name. You know, for me, it was tough that the board didn't approve doing this resolution in July, but I'm glad they approved a resolution in August. And I'm just really pleased with the way this has come and how much the students are really part of this whole thing. So thank you again, Mr. Burr and everyone.
Thank you. I, I want to thank Jen for being the conduit for me to meet such great people at the high school and for making sure that a conversation that happened over the summer continued to live. You know, it wasn't just this conversation that happened and then dissipated. This has really turned into something. And I think that's a powerful lesson for our kids.
Brian?
Yeah, Jason, I wonder if you could say a bit more about next steps. I've heard a couple of times, first of all, the engagement with the students is fantastic. The support that you've received from teachers who view this as a wonderful opportunity is great. I was a history major and I, I was in touch with Marnie Sandweiss recently, who leads the Princeton Slavery Project. And I asked her about John Witherspoon and she replied that he was one of the most vexing of all of the figures because he's so complicated. And, and there's so many different stories that you can tell about him. So I'm happy that these are some of the stories that are being told and some of the things that the students are wrestling with, you know, in this, this very complicated world. And how do we look through the lens of, you know, today? It's something that happened, you know, hundreds of years ago. But I wondered if you could just say a bit more about next steps because this right now seems very student focused. It's fantastic. There are a lot of community members who think they're going to be actively engaged in the process of thinking about names, talking about whether it should be a, a generic Princeton community name, like many of our other schools. So I just wonder if you could say a little bit more about those next steps. So we manage everybody's expectations well.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I know that as part of the renaming committee, the Dr. Galasso assigned some different responsibilities, the educational plan. And as you hear Dr. Galasso starting to say, you're seeing these, the educational plan and plans to engage the community are going to start to fuse back together. The website is a way to kind of continue to report on our progress and engaging perhaps in some of our community partners who would continue to help, you know, publicize what we're trying to do here at the school. You know, powerful ways that maybe we can engage some of our community partners to enlist the, the people that they talk to most closely and saying, hey, or do you know that the middle school is undergoing a name change and, and are you, you know, are you interested in that work? And by the way, here's a link to their website on our webpage. And that way it starts to look like all of us are all talking about the same thing. There was also some conversation on collecting some of the community stories. And I know that there have been a couple of receptacles, ways of, of that, that living history of capturing that living history that Ms. Satterfield has talked about in a few occasions. And, and I know as part of our conversation, at one point, somebody had brought up this concept, NPR has that segment called Story Core. And how powerful it would be to capture these small soundbites of people who maybe have memories of attending John Witherspoon Middle School and how they feel about that now. So there's another layer. I think there's a couple of layers to this, Mr. McDonald, that I think are still worthy of exploration. And I think some doors that we can still open.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to go back further and, and talk more about not necessarily John Witherspoon School, but the Witherspoon School and the origin of, of that name. And then how the decision was made in the 1960s to choose a name for our middle school.
Yep, Brian, just, just to echo what Jason's saying. We broke it into buckets and this was the major piece to get started with. And wanted to see how this was going to evolve. Next piece is we were working with Mrs. Satterfield and we're probably going to even expand our committee with some recommendations. And then the next piece is the community outreach. And we've had some preliminary discussions on how to, how to engage and, and, and tie this in with the community. Those plans have not been finalized yet. We're still in the discussion stage. We wanted to get this element to begin. And then our next meeting or two, we'll kind of figure out how to get the community engaged. We've talked about, you know, Zoom engagements with the community. We've talked about them submitting videos and having the kids interact with both segments. So I mean, there's a whole host of things that we're thinking about. But as I say, we're, we wanted this major thread to be vetted through the community first, and then we'll move forward. We're, you know, we're, we're hoping over the next six months that this comes to conclusion. And it, it evolves into something that's spectacular, you know. I don't want to belabor this, but the hallways in our schools, we talked about being living museums where there's a little code where kids can learn about different things as they change hallways and so forth. So there's a lot of creative and innovative ideas that are coming out here. And the question becomes, you know, with the two board members who serve and the other seven members who are on the organizing committee with me with Betsy and Debbie and, and Mrs. Satterfield and Angela and so forth and so on. The, the ideas are, are, are growing every time we meet. But tonight, we just wanted to make sure that everybody understood where we're going from an educational standpoint.
If I could ask a question, Mr. Burr, thank you for your leadership on this. It's wonderful to see how excited you are about it. And I'm especially grateful for the involvement of the kids. And I just, you know, I was just driving and I was thinking about this. Our, our school district, so we're not in a vacuum and we're, we're making, we're doing all this introspection and we're making this change. And I just wonder, you know, our main, one of our main streets is Witherspoon Street. And I just wondered if you had any, you know, inquiries from the town or any, or have you reached out to suggest that they might, you know, benefit from being involved in this conversation?
No, I haven't engaged in that specifically, but I would still be open minded as the renaming committee is continuing to adjust, you know, what our reach or what our scope is going to be. I'd certainly be willing to be part of that conversation for sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Burr. I can't wait to see what the final recommendations are.
Thank you. Great. Well, thanks, Jason. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
One other thing that I wanted to do tonight, and I know we've had a lot of, of interesting things so far, but I wanted to highlight a, one of our teachers. She teaches accelerated AP, accelerated and AP bio. It's Stephanie Shoup. She's been 16-year teaching veteran, 13 years here in Princeton. And I wanted Matt, if you could key up this two-minute video. It's our science supervisor, Emergula, introducing it. But it's, it's kind of a very, I think is very neat experiment. It's actually, you know, capturing fruit flies and experiment. Now with Thanksgiving coming, with all the fruits, it's going to be on various tables. This may be something that we could all utilize in the next week. But I thought this was interesting and it shows the creativity and the, the type of instructiveness happening in a COVID world. So Matt, if you wouldn't mind playing it? Maybe. That was gone. Hold on. Yeah, takes a second to load. I know. I'm sorry.
Labs are where most of the fun happens in science classes. The opportunity to be hands-on, working with materials, chemicals, plants, animals, minds grappling with post-problems, observing phenomena, making predictions, gathering data, debating ideas and coming up with the best solution is the core of all science lab activities. However, in this era of remote and hybrid learning, and in order to ensure that our students do not miss out on this valuable hands-on and more importantly, minds-on experience, we've had to make some changes to how labs will be conducted this year. Though lab work looks a little different this school year than they have in the past, the focus on developing 21st century skills still remains at the core. As an example, is Ms. Stephanie Shoup's ninth grade biology lab class.
Okay, so this is to help you guys with your experimental design. When you go ahead and collect your own data on your own organism and your own setup. I have an example here of a choice chamber. And for one of the first examples I'm going to show you is I'm going to set up a choice between wet and dry for the pill box. And I cut out a circle with regular old paper towel. Okay. And then I cut it in half so that when I place it inside of this pool, there are two distinct halves. So if I follow what I had written on the paper, wet and dry, one side, I would go ahead and add my water. And that means you need your parent's supervision and their permission to be able to do this. Another type of choice chamber that you can do is I went ahead and took an old paper towel. I cut one side open so that I can have a dark choice and a light choice for my organism. And on my dark side, I just kind of closed that up. So it truly is dark. There is an example of a choice chamber. Here is an example, again, just do stuff around the house. My son made this choice chamber for us out of Legos, okay? And of course you can build this as high as you want. And for this, I might use ants. And to make sure that the animal doesn't escape. Okay, this is something from my daughter's toys. I just borrowed it and I covered it with Saran Wrap. So you can do something with anything that you find around your house and set up a good experimental design with all of the elements of a strong setup.
Well, we only showed two minutes of it tonight because of time, but I do want to thank Stephanie. I also want to thank Mr. Gallagher for editing it for us and putting it into a two-minute clip. We will have the full clip up on our website. So those of you who want to make sure you can contain these fruit flies, this is probably a good video to watch. So I want to thank you, Stephanie, for being so creative and innovative and just a, another example of, of a fine teacher in Princeton schools. So thank you for sharing with us tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Glasso. That brings us to item I1, the public forum part of our meeting. We asked that the public, if you would like to speak, you will limit your comments to three minutes. You state your name and your address. You can indicate by raising your hand on the bottom of your screen and Mr. Bolden will call on you. So now we have public comment.
Orin Webby? Orin, are you out there?
Orin is on mute. Orin, could you unmute yourself?
We'll go on to Charles Gallagher. Charlie.
Unmute, right?
You're, you're fine now.
There you go. You're good.
Hey, thanks so much for having me. My name's Charles Gallagher. I am a teacher at the high school. I teach television production, multimedia, special effects filmmaking. And also happen, I also happen to be a head football coach for our football team for the past several years since 2014. And I have three children attending the school district. I have two in high school. I have one a sophomore and one a freshman. And then I also have one who is a seventh grader at Pums, all having a great time at school in the hybrid. And you may have seen a few of them in a video that you just showed a few seconds ago and against their will, probably. Having said that, I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Board of Education and to Dr. Glasso on behalf of the football team. And I might be able to say on behalf of all of fall athletics for making the choice to have a fall season. Thank you so much for all the board members who voted for it and who voted against it. I appreciated all of the, all the great dialogue that everyone had during that board meeting two months ago where I, we were waiting on pins and needles and to find out if we were going to have a fall season. So thank you so much. I wanted to extend a thank you not only to the Board of Ed, but to our principal Jessica Baxter and her team. I wanted to give a huge special thank you to Brian Dubinsky, our athletic director, and his entire team, Kathy Herzog, who are two amazing individuals who really worked tirelessly throughout the entire season to make a great fall season. Okay. Even though we had a few bumps in the road, like a couple canceled games and whatnot, everyone was able to persevere and get through that adversity and it was just really great. I want to thank Shannon Coe for keeping an eye on everyone, making sure that we were all COVID, following all the COVID protocols. And that entire team of monitors, health monitors and security. I wanted to give a special shout, special shout out to our health monitor in particular. He was a former student of mine. He is a current EMT and an aspiring doctor, Brian Hill. So I know there were some bumps in the road with Brian as far as our football team and things like that, but I appreciate his patience and I appreciate it, his transparency. And we had a great working relationship throughout the entire fall as far as that goes. I want to, uh, let's see here. I just have one last thing. I just wanted to say, you know, besides the games and the, the competition, sports played an instrumental part into our fall season. It created and, and maintained and built relationships. It was great for the social, emotional growth of all of our players on all those fields. And it built great leaders. I could tell you, we had three captains this year. And while we still have one more game, we're crossing our fingers, we can get, we can get to the, we can get to the finish line on Saturday at 10:30. We had three phenomenal leaders lead us. And I know they wouldn't have had that opportunity to be leaders unless it was, you know, right here on the football team. So I want to thank Moses Santizo and Dylan Angelucci and Mike Spadia for doing just a great job with our football program. Thank you very much, Board of Ed.
Thank you, Coach.
Any other speakers out there? Just raise your hand. I don't see any others.
Okay.
Kristin Munzen.
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thanks for, thanks for taking the time. I just wanted to comment on the, the note that schools will be closed through that week after Thanksgiving. And as I've done in the past, I just urge Dr. Glasso and the board, who have done a really thoughtful job in how this has all been done, but to just continue being thoughtful in not making blanket openings or closings. You know, as you're aware, as I've mentioned before, we have a student who, who really can't learn via Zoom. So we ask that going forward, that these not be, be kind of an all or nothing decision and that specific classes and, and kids' needs be taken into account. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are there no other speakers?
No further speakers. Thank you very much for your comments. We're going to move on to our board committee reports and that is, let's see what we've got. Hang on. First is Equity, Ms. Wonder.
We have not had a meeting since our last.
And then we'll go to Facilities.
Hi, I will meet, we had a meeting on November 2nd at 8:30 in the morning. And we received an update from the administration on the completion of the work that was being done on the referendum and then schedule for the work that is still continuing at the middle school, even though they were able to open. We received, we were notified that the, the contract was signed for our JP construction next summer. So the planning for that work will begin and we will, we know that they're working on a timeline for the PHS work that has just started due to the permits. We also were told about future projects that will be presented to us. Roof audit is being conducted as well as building control bids and potential work for the, the middle school pool ventilation system. And lastly, in the sustainable portion of our meeting, we continued to hear the plans for the install of the LED lighting and hot water heaters and some HVAC upgrades for next summer at the, at the elementary schools. It was brought up that as they do the roof audit, that we should be mindful of potential future solar projects and that the administration informed us they'll be getting to look at future work, sustainable work now for the middle school and the high school. Our next meeting will be December 7th at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. We're just going to quick circle back to Equity. I think Michelle does have something to say.
All right, I had a mental lapse. We, there was an equity meeting on November 9th and we actually heard from Valerie Ulrich, who is our grants writer for the district and Keisha Smith Harrington. And Valerie went over all of the equity programs that are funded by grant funding from supported summer programming, Title I funds, connectivity. We've been able to secure funds for, to ensure that students have Wi-Fi and are able to school at home. So as Valerie says, access is equity. And Keisha explained to us the racial literacy K, pre-K through one project that she has been working on based on Dr. Goldie Muhammad's text, which is cultivating, cultivating genius. So it was, it was a really good meeting and we also talked about our vision for the future. That if we had a magic wand, what would equity look like in our, in our school district? And so we talked about our desire to have a continuation of, of racial literacy throughout the entire K through 12. And we talked about teacher training, special education, a professional development school so that we could in-house work with all of our teachers on treating all of their students equally and also to treating them as individuals and just to be more adept and to have that knowledge in-house as opposed to calling it in. So it was, it was a great meeting. So that's it. And I apologize for that oversight.
That's okay. All right. That takes us to finance. Mr. McDonald?
Sure. Finance had a chance to meet about, well, right after Facilities met on November 2nd. It had been a while since we've met as the staff have been very, very focused on getting the schools open and operating as safely as possible. We had a good meeting. There was good news and there was, I guess, not, not good news. The first thing that we learned were that our expenses directly associated with operating during COVID this year were at $1.6 million and rising. And Dr. Glasso shared with us that he believes that that number could reach or exceed $2 million as we continue to make sure that our schools are operating as safely as possible. That was followed by a discussion about tracking, how important it is to track savings. There are some savings that we, we get while we're operating in either a remote or a partially remote environment. And we had a discussion about the importance of doing the best we can to track those savings. And our business administrator, Matt Bolden, shared why that's a little, a bit of a challenge, but it's something that we're going to work on. Then we had a piece of very good news, surprising news, which is that perhaps the only thing that Governor Murphy and Senate Majority Leader Sweeney agree on is one component of school funding. And that's extraordinary aid for special education, which reimburses us for expenses from the prior year. And even in this difficult year, for a second year in a row, they increase the amount. Now it's only at about 62% of what it should be. But for us, that had an impact of getting us another $175,000. And more importantly, it evidences the strong commitment that they have to doing their best to make sure that special education is more fully funded. And we share that value and encourage them to continue to move forward. We learned that we may need a new tractor. I'll stop there. It's not that exciting. We're going to get a new tractor. We reviewed the budget calendar and a slight change in philosophy, moving from last year's priority-based budget process to a zero-based budget process. I won't comment on that, but when I finish in 30 seconds, we'll invite Dr. Glasso or Business Administrator Bolden to say a few words about that because I think it is a meaningful change. The last thing I'll say is that because of the surplus, Dr. Glasso and Matt, working with our auditors, have decided to transfer $700,000 to capital reserve and $300,000 to maintenance reserve, which can be used for important, important things like roof repairs, which will look increasingly likely that they will be in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Dr. Glasso? Oh, Matt, did you want to say anything about zero-based budgeting?
Yeah, I'll just make it short and sweet, but the, the principle behind zero-based budgeting is that you build every budget from, from zero and build it up on the things that are most necessary. You know, where it ties in, of course, is that, you know, we have to value certain priorities above others. So it's not a total redo, but, but it's going to be a lot of more detail put in by our budget managers. So supervisors, principals will have a little more work to do this year. The first year is always the hardest. So we look forward to moving forward with that process.
We, we very much appreciate that innovation. I think does the board have any questions there? I think that takes us to Personnel. Debbie?
Great. The Personnel Committee.
Great. The Personnel Committee met on November twelfth at nine AM. Tonight, the board will be approving two new job description. One is a custodial supervisor. This is not a new position, just an update to title responsibility. This is being created to improve the reporting structure and give principals responsibility of their own buildings. The second job description is a new position. It's an HVAC technician foreman. This position is being created based on the new and different HVAC units that the district has purchased installed with our referendum. This position requires a high qualified HVAC candidate to maintain all our new equipment. Tonight, we will also be approving a few more EPEs, before and after coverage at several libraries and robotics at PUMS. Finally, we will be approving a sidebar with the union for both a cheerleading assistant and head coach. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to policy. Peter Katz, do we have?
Uh, I, I didn't want to pull a Michelle talk ponder and inadvertently say we didn't have a meeting, but I'm pretty sure we didn't have a meeting since our, our last meeting.
It's Friday, right?
If I'm embarrassed, I'll, uh, I'll come back like Michelle did, but I know we have our next meeting this Friday, uh, eight A, I believe eight AM.
Yes, thank you.
I was going to live that down?
No.
Just a little bit, just a little.
Very confident about that. Um, student achievement, please.
Thank you. We did meet. We met just this last Friday on the thirteenth, um, at eleven thirty. We had just two topics on the agenda, but it was a great meeting. Uh, we had PHS teacher Jackie Katz and supervisor of science Maurelle Bejage attend to obtain approval for a student research project. One of the students in the independent research class is administering a survey for, uh, to, in order to get a better sense of how PHS students perceive racism. This is an anonymous survey and a voluntary one. We did approve this request. Um, Dr. Ginsberg has reached out, uh, to the staff about a possibility of revising, um, the way we approve such research studies and student achievements. So you'll have to stay tuned, but we always do love hearing about what students are doing. And we did ask, uh, that the student come back with what they have learned. Then the majority of our meeting was a special education update, and we want to thank Director of Special Services, Mickey Chrisafouli and Supervisors of Special Education, Eric Solak, Beth Murrin and Crystal Riddick, who attended to give us an update on special education services during remote and hybrid learning. They updated us on topics at each level, such as sharing the benefits of Canvas to both students and teachers, schedule changes that have facilitated greater collaboration among staff and the ways that staff have supported both students and their parents through this challenging time. The committee encouraged Mickey and her team to think outside the box for summer programming in two thousand and twenty-one so that we are best set up to meet students' needs and we know there will be, uh, significant needs. Mickey also gave an update on the special education program review, which is in the process of scheduling focus groups with parents. So we thank those parents in advance for taking part. And it is expected a final report will be presented to the board in June of two thousand and twenty-one. So, uh, we do put, plan to begin discussing summer programming in January of twenty, uh, in, in January of two thousand and twenty-one for the summer. But we do expect the report on the program review in June. Our next meeting is on Friday, December eighteenth. It's open to the public. We are planning on having a closed meeting Friday, December fourth, but that is just for the committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Betsy. Um, and then negotiations, is there anything, Daphna?
No, thankfully.
Okay.
End of the year.
Thank you.
Hopefully our employees are happy.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Um, that takes us to item K, um, personnel. And now we're going to start moving more quickly. Uh, we have a number of consent items. So just stop me if you want to make a comment or have a question. I'll just read the titles. We have the K one retirements. We have K two termination. K three appointments. K four leaves of absence. K five curriculum instruction. K six student services. Seven substitutes. Eight tuition reimbursements. Nine transfer and reassignment. Ten personnel items. Eleven athletic appointments. Twelve six period compensation. Thirteen pressa article C stipend. Fourteen non-athletic EPS. Fifteen job descriptions. Sixteen PAA vacation buyback. Seventeen sidebar agreements, uh, racial literacy and cheerleading. That takes us to item L, one educational placement of special needs. M one financial reports. M two Mylone and McBroom. M three uh, transportation agreement. And we come to our consent vote. And can I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Peter? Any discussion? If not, can we have a roll call, please? Mr. Bolden?
Sure. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Yes, Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Ron McDonald?
Yes.
Del talk ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimous. Um, that takes us to our final public comment. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment at this point, please raise your hand.
I see no comments.
If not, that takes us to the closing, uh, of the meeting. I just want to thank everyone for, in particular, Dr. Glasso for arranging such, uh, informative, uh, presentations for us tonight. It's always wonderful to hear what our students are doing and to see the work of our staff. It's really, really great, great work. And is there anything else? If not, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session, please.
Okay, uh, can I have a second for that? I think we can do that. Okay. Do we have to vote to do that? Let's, although in favor, show your hands. Yes. Okay, we are going to adjourn to executive session.
Is the motion in the, uh, so, uh,
Daphna and with a Debbie in a second.
Okay. I just have to note that.
So does, does Matt have to set up another Zoom call?
We do a separate Zoom?
No action intended, so we can close, we can close the meeting from closed session. If there's any intention of there being action, then we have to go back into open.
No, I don't think so.
Just for discussion purposes.
Yes.
Can we go back on the closed session Zoom from before?
I don't think so.
I, I assume we can't be enclosed with, as panelists, though.
I'll, I'll send out an immediate, uh, notification, but we're not going to take action unless we want to set up a whole new public meeting.
No.
We'll adjourn from closed session.
Yes, we will. Okay.
Okay.
So thank you to all who attended tonight. We're going to adjourn to close.
Everybody.
Thank you. Bye.